It's for the Pledge of Legion.
Becky, we please do roll call.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Crone?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Here.
Councilmembers Bottenberg and Grover absent.
Agenda item D is open forum. Open forum is for members of the public or anyone here tonight to address the council on any subject over which the council has the authority to act or on any item on the agenda other than a public hearing. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council at this time? If attending via Zoom, you can click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls.
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
Open forum is closed. Agenda item E is agenda approval. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Agenda item G1 is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance, city of Waukees, Iowa by rezoning certain property from R2 to R2/PD1 and from R2/PD1 to R2, a property known as Remington Point. I now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have we received any written correspondence on this?
No, none received in the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Melissa?
Good evening, mayor and council. The owner is Phillips Hamilton, Inc., and the applicant is Landmark Development Services, Inc. The property is located south of University Avenue and west of Seventeenth Street, contains 15.3 acres. The request is to rezone the property from R2 to R2/PD1 and from R2/PD1 to R2 for single family development. The property was originally rezoned from A1 to R2 and R2/PD1 as part of the overall rezoning for the Remington Point development in the fall of 2022. This request is just to make a minor adjustment to the zoning boundaries for the R2 and R2/PD1 lots. The proposed concept will make more sense in that it'll place the smaller PD lots adjacent to the property zone for townhome residential that's shown just to the north of this proposed rezoning. I have a couple of slides in here just to kind of show you what it is zoned today and what it will look like. So if you look at the hatched in areas, on the left side is the current zoning, that's the PD lots. And then just the R2 standard lots is not hatched in adjacent to that. The proposed zoning on the right side of the screen, the yellow shown, the lots shown in yellow are the smaller lots, the PD1 lots, and then the kind of tan color are the R2 lots. So again, it'll place the PD1 lots closer to the higher density zoning to the north. The proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan and the existing surrounding land uses. Notifications have been sent out. Staff has not received any correspondence for or against the request. Staff recommends holding the public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium, or if participating via Zoom, please click on the raise hand icon located under reactions controls.
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
All right. Does council have any questions at this time? I now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G2 is a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with SJC Properties LLC. I now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have we received any correspondence?
No, none received in the city clerk's office.
Director Brown?
Good evening, mayor and council. Steph has been working with SJC Properties LLC on a proposed development agreement for downtown infill project located west side of the 400 block of Sixth Street. This is 420 and 436th Street. That's formerly, that was Jerry's Barber Shop, and that small little 900 square feet building there that was formerly, I think, a law office. The project consists of a 9,000 square feet commercial building that will feature retail space on the ground floor and a service or office on the second floor. The minimum required investment for this project is $3 million. There will be a valuation, significant valuation increase from 151,000 approximately, well, 151,000 to 2.5 million approximately, so a significant increase in valuation. The proposed incentives include a 10-year annual property tax rebate at 70% of the tax increment generated. The max not to exceed will be 475,000. There will be a $30,000 grant for design and engineering, which will be deducted from the rebate in years one and years two. Other requirements include independent business priority, which means that at least 40% of the leasable space must be allocated with priority given to independently owned businesses. And then also a lease cap rate, so at least 75% of the leasable space must remain at or below Waukees' current average retail lease rate. The eligibility for the TIF incentive, this does, this project is of course creating new taxable valuation, and it does provide significant investment in downtown. And without this, without these TIF assistance, this project might have not occurred. So it does fall within our TIF eligibility scope. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. I do want to add though, as well, that our, the developer could not be here today, but she did want to say that she thanks council for considering this project, and she hopes that it will be transformational for the downtown, and staff does recommend holding a public hearing.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to speak on this public hearing item? Voice any comments or questions? If so, please approach the podium, or if participating via Zoom, raise your hand.
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
All right. Does council have any questions at this time?
I do have one very small question, and I know we talked about this. If you could just refresh my memory, on the independent business priority, would that also apply to like a franchise that's independently owned?
It could, yes. And it wouldn't exclude necessarily a business. Obviously, it's just asking for priority to be given first and foremost, so.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. I'll clear this public hearing closed. Agenda item G3 is public hearing on plan specifications form of contract and estimate of cost for the West Coast, West area trunk sewer extension phase three project. We now have an ocean. I now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have we received any correspondence?
None received in the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Director Kester?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members. Up on the screen is an exhibit showing the location of the West Area Trunk Sewer Phase Three Extension. This project includes materials, equipment, and labor necessary to construct approximately 3,300 linear feet of majority 24-inch diameter sanitary sewer in open cut. There is one directional boring under the existing T Avenue roadway. As you can see where that yellow line represents our project in the roadway crossing. Also includes the manholes excavation, backfill, surface restoration, other miscellaneous work, including the cleanup. This is located west and east of T Avenue. That would be the north-south street you see up on the exhibit represented there, and then just south of 311th Street. This project is in our CIPs and are approved as well as in our draft. It has a total budget of $2.4 million, of which $400,000 was budgeted in the fiscal year '25 to '29 CIP, and the other remaining $2 million is budgeted in the draft fiscal year '26 to '30 CIP. It does have an interim completion date with the sanitary fully installed, tested, and operational by the end of November of 2025, and then all the remaining work needs to be completed by the end of May 2026. Happy to take any questions if you have any. Staff recommends holding the public hearing.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice any comments or questions on this public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls.
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
All right. Does council have any questions at this time? All right. Thank you. And I declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item H1, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance, city of Waukees, Iowa by rezoning certain property from R2 to R2/PD1 and from R2/PD1 to R2, a property known as Remington Point. This is an introduction and first reading.
I introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading in title only.
Second. Melissa?
I have nothing further to add. Staff recommends approval of the first consideration of the rezoning for Remington Point. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? All right. Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Agenda item H2, consideration of approval of a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Waukees and SJC Properties LLC. Can I get a motion?
It's all moved. Second.
Jennifer?
I have nothing further to add. Staff recommends approval of the agreement.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Agenda item H3 for the West Area Trunk Sewer Extension Phase Three Project, H3A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The plans, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost are on file with the city clerk for review upon request. Staff recommends approving the resolution. Happy to take questions if you have any.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item H3B, consideration of approval of resolution awarding contract. Move to approve?
Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up on the screen, you can see a bid tab summary. We had six bidders submit bids on March 11th, and you can see that our parent low bidder or our engineer's estimate was $2 million, and we had a parent low bid of $1,179,000 from SM Henches and Sons, Inc. of Jordan, Minnesota. We reviewed those documents, everything appeared to be in order. Me, Sean Kim, does recommend awarding the project to SM Henches and Sons out of Jordan, Minnesota, for that dollar amount. We do have experience working with them previously. They most recently completed the South Alphal Sewer and the West Area Trunk Sewer Phase One project for us in 2017 to 19. So they successfully completed that project. Staff has comfortable level working with them and their staff, so staff would recommend awarding the project to SM Henches and Sons, Inc. out of Jordan, Minnesota for $1,179,000. Happy to take any questions if you have any.
You are on a roll with these bids, Rudy. You've now set expectations, though.
I know.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I1, consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
I2, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance, city of Waukees, Iowa by rezoning certain property from A1 to M1, a property addressed as 33263 Ute Avenue. This is a second reading.
Move to approve the second reading of the ordinance in title only.
Second. Melissa?
Okay, this property is located south of Interstate Parkway and west of Ute Avenue. It contains 1.18 acres in area. Staff recommends approval of the second reading of the rezoning, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
I3, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 122 peddlers and solicitors by amending Section 122.04 application for license and by amending Section 122.06 bond required. This is a second, third, and final reading.
I move to approve the second reading of the ordinance. Wave the third and place on final passage.
Second.
All right.
Becky?
Staff recommends waiving the third reading. We consider this merely a housekeeping matter, just kind of cleaning up some of the existing language, not making any substantive changes. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any final questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
I4 for WBP Storage, I4A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving final plat. Can I get a motion?
To approve?
Second.
Melissa?
The owner and applicant is Next Phase Development LLC. This property is located north of Southeast Frontier Avenue and west of Southeast Alsas Road. It contains just under an acre in area. The property is zoned M1 Light Industrial District with a planned development overlay. The subject property was previously developed with one building that was used for contractor storage. A fire destroyed that building, and the building was removed in 2021. This project includes the construction of a single-story industrial storage building. The building is just over 16,000 square feet in area and 20 feet tall. There's also outdoor storage located to the north of the building. The final plat, I think I have it in here, it includes nine lots, so each unit, including the storage unit, is on its own lot, and then it also includes one outlot. The outlot includes all the stuff outside of the lots, which is to be owned and maintained by an owners association. One access will be provided off of Southeast Frontier Avenue. Parking and landscaping requirements are being met. Public utilities are provided to the site. Stormwater management will be provided with a detention basin, which is located to the south of the site. Building elevations. So the building will look like that there, to be constructed mostly of architectural metal panels, corrugated metal panels, and storefront glazing, brick, and then overhead doors. The overhead doors face the east, so it will not be seen along, I mean, it's not facing frontier. The majority of the brick will face the main public street. Staff recommends approval of the final plat and site plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I4B, consideration of approval of a resolution approving site plan at 1035 Southeast Frontier Avenue. Move to approve?
Second.
Melissa?
I have nothing further to add on the site plan, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Okay. Item I5 for 426th Street, SJC Builders Village District. I5A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving preliminary plat. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Melissa?
I'll go ahead and present A, B, and C as one project. The owner and applicant is SJC Properties. The property is located south of Walnut Street and west of Sixth Street, containing 0.23 acres. The property is zoned C2 Downtown Village District. Two buildings were recently removed from the site. The project includes the construction of a new two-story building for commercial retail space. Let me go to the site plan for you, so you can see what that site plan layout looks like. The building is 6,250 square feet in area and approximately 35 feet in height. The south side of the building will abut the existing building to the south. The north side of the site will leave approximately 10 feet of space between the proposed building and the existing building to the north. The final plat will combine the existing three lots into one lot. The proposed lot is 0.23 acres in area. A few parking spaces will be provided on-site. They will be accessible from the public alley along the west side of the site. On-street parking is provided throughout the downtown area. The C2 zoning does not require any off-street parking spaces, so those few parking spaces are in addition to what they are required to provide. All public utilities are provided to the site. Stormwater will be collected in area intakes, and then the building elevations, you kind of saw it with Jennifer's presentation earlier. So that's the building elevation that will face Sixth Street, and it's mainly brick and storefront glazing. And then this will be the south elevation. This faces the alley to the west, and then the north elevation. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat, final plat and site plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I5B, consideration of approval of a resolution approving final plat. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve? Second.
Melissa?
I have nothing further to add.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
I5C, consideration of approval of a resolution approving site plan for 420 and 436th Street. Move to approve?
Second.
Melissa?
Again, nothing further to add. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Item I6, consideration of approval of a resolution approving an amendment to developers agreement with JDS Real Estate Investments LLC, successor and interests Metro Acquisitions LLC. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Andy?
Good evening, mayor, clerk, and council members. So this is an amendment to an existing development agreement that the city entered into back in, towards the end of 2022, and it surrounded or pertains to some property that is, used to be called the Schuman Property. Jeff Stambro with Stambro Real Estate purchased it in 2022, and our original developers agreement with Jeff included some provisions for the city to acquire this drainage way that kind of bisects the property into kind of two separate pieces. The city has gone ahead and acquired that property, but then also included some provisions for the extension of this north-south, main north-south street across property that city owns, but then also included provision that the city would install a culvert for that street crossing through that drainage way. And really, the amendment here tonight focuses on, on the street crossing and the culvert. There were some specific dates in that original agreement that both parties were supposed to perform by, and neither party did because the developer hadn't started the project. Well, we're starting to review the construction drawings for the first phase of the development, and so we felt it was time to bring this amendment forward. So the proposed amended agreement would include the city to construct the culvert by December 31st of 2026, and then for the developer to complete the road improvements by December 31st, 2027. So those are really the two main adjustments to the existing developers agreement, other than a different entity now owns the property. It's still the same developer, just a different entity. So that's why it's successor and interest to Metro Acquisitions. So, but otherwise, staff would recommend approval of the amendment to the developers agreement with JDS Real Estate Investments LLC, successor and interest to Metro Acquisitions LLC, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I7, consideration of approval of a resolution approving city of Waukees civic master plan. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Brad?
Thank you, mayor. Several years ago, the city began acquiring property located south of our public safety, or excuse me, our public works building and west of the Sugar Creek Municipal Golf Course. And the city council has prioritized the completion of a master plan for the development of this property long-term. So over the last year, in addition to the consultants that the city hired, city staff and elected officials have worked towards the completion of what was being presented here tonight, which is an overall master plan of the civic campus property. The intent behind this is that it is intended to provide a long-term vision for how the property could develop. Done a lot of these plans in the past, and unfortunately, they don't always develop exactly what they are shown, but it is intended to provide that intent and overall vision and goal. Certainly is intended to be a transformational development within the city of Waukees. The property, although owned by the city today, does incorporate both a balance between public amenities and improvements, as well as private development and the necessary infrastructure to not only support the development of this area, but also future development further to the west, south, and north of the city of Waukees today. It is intended that this is a 20- to 30-year full-term plan, recognizing that there are some significant costs associated with this, but over a period of time and as funds are available, portions of this property can be developed. Would note that the private components of this property not only would create additional tax base, but also would create funding sources for the sale of those properties to fund some of the other public amenities. Public amenities associated with the overall plan include the development of approximately 30-acre lake. That's intended to be a recreational lake with activities such as kayaking and paddle boarding, would incorporate facilities that allow for rental of that type of equipment in addition to fishing and other kind of water activities that occur at some of our other locations. In addition to that, the public amenities also include large park space and open space, the potential for a covered pavilion, as well as sets up for two building pad sites for the potential of a city hall and library, new library addition on the west side of the pond, excuse me, the lake. In addition to the public buildings, there are, there is incorporated within this plan the potential expansion of the Sugar Creek Golf Course, as well as a long-term future goal that could include the development of a competition recreation-type facility shown at the southwest corner of the property. The property does include two major roadways, including the extension of University Avenue along the north end of the property and the expansion or extension of 10th Street through the property, which would eventually connect up to the existing interchange off of Interstate 80. Again, this is a long-term vision and plan, and will be implemented over a number of years, but you have to have a goal in mind in order to get started. So as you are aware, as a part of the capital improvements plan, several of these road projects have been incorporated and will begin to start to take shape over the next three to five years. Probably the most visual component of this would be the building of that lake, which I believe we are three years from that being constructed as a part of one of the road projects. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Planning and zoning commission has reviewed this and recommended approval of the overall civic campus master plan, and staff would also recommend approval.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? It's very exciting. Too transformational. I like to use that word, transformational projects on the agendas tonight. All right. Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes. Yes.[1654.91]